...council member and school board members. Still, voter participation overall was expected to be quote "embarrassingly low", according to council president Herb Wesson. That's why he authored two measures to change the city's election cycle.
So we're on the same track with the gubernatorial and presidential election in hopes of an increased turnout.
The philosophy is LA voters will be more enticed to participate if presidential and governor's races are also at stake. City elections will change to even-numbered years, starting in 2020.
If that doesn't give us the desired increase, then we're gonna need to look at other things.
One idea is to shift elections from Tuesdays to weekends. Coincide it with sick La Vie and other outdoor events, and possibly watch participation grow, while council president Wesson is suggesting stronger civics education in classrooms.
Start them early to be community or civic-minded.
To boost student interest long before they're old enough to vote. Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The LA City Clerk's office says it plans to expand voter outreach through increased social media and additional street banners in the next election cycle. Well, many Angelenos have ripped out their lawns and cut their water use, but officials say that's simply not enough as our record-breaking drought continues. That's why local and state officials are stepping up efforts to make each drop count. Rasha Goel has the details.
To help with the emergency drought conditions persisting throughout California, federal and state officials are coming together to leverage funding resources to improve water conservation. At a press conference held at the Donald Tillman Water Reclamation Plant, here's what officials had to say.
Today, we're announcing a new $50 million of water efficiency projects, most of them coming here to California. And you know you're not the only state in drought, but you're a state that is leveraging federal resources quite effectively to bring a lot of this money into your state.
Through the grant initiative called Water Smart, funding is provided for water conservation improvements and water reuse projects.
First of all, we're reclaiming and reusing water, similar to this project. We're granting money to line canals and to install piping that will reduce seepage losses in irrigation systems. We're installing advanced metering equipment.
In the case of the water efficiency projects and the feasibility studies, it's a required 50% match. 50% federal dollars and at least 50% non-federal dollars. Could be state, could be local, could be utility.
Officials say, as of February 2015, Angelenos have used 22% less water than they did during the last major drought, which occurred in 2007. Yet, a lot more work has to be done.
Our goal is to reduce our dependence on imported water and to build sustainability and to ensure that we can continue to serve great, clean, healthy water to all of our customers.
While officials are doing their part, the city is urging Angelenos to also do theirs when it comes to saving this precious resource. In Van Nuys, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Out of that $50 million, more than $23 million will be invested in seven water reclamation and reuse projects in California. And here in LA, it's a source for even more cutting-edge ideas on how to save California's precious water. The annual Spring Green Expo shows off the latest innovations untapped this year. Anna Marcos was there.
This toilet and the sign with it takes center stage on the floor. One of 70 exhibits of all things water-wise and earth-friendly at the Spring Green Expo.
It's a shame that we use clean water to flush our toilets.
It doesn't need to be a shame any longer. A simple $35 kit allows you to recycle water for flushing.
When you activate the flush, water starts coming out. You wash your hands in the sink, and the water there from the sinks drains into the toilet and waits there for your next flush.
The Metropolitan Water District, which supplies much of Southern California's water, including water used by LADWP, created the event. It's now in its eighth year.
Eight of the last nine years have been dry in California, so we're closing in on a decade of drought. And this is an eye-opener for California. This is the most serious drought we've seen. This is the perfect time for people to really look at new products and save water, save energy.
The LADWP, for its part, is helping customers to redesign their lawns and make money.
For example, if you have 1,000 square feet, and you take that out and replace that with drought-tolerant landscape at $3.75 per square foot, we're talking about a check of $3,750 to the customer.
A $3,000 check sounds great. All you have to do is visit ladwp.com, file an online application, upload your pictures of your garden, and wait for pre-approval.
I'm excited because I don't like my grass not green. It's depressing to look at, but if I do it in an alternative format with drought-resistant plants and some really fun stuff, it's done.
Innovation is the name of the game here. Close to half of all the ideas come from students from local universities. Green algae gasoline, anyone?
So we could be pumping gas that's actually algae in the future.
Yes, of course.
These students just might have designed the mixed-use residential complex of the future, a project with a net-zero energy use.
We produce all of our energy on-site that powers the whole building, all the lighting, all the wander machines, everything, all the heating, and that's produced from solar panels, wind turbines, and water turbines.
Great water-saving ideas to help LA in what could be water-lean years ahead. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The Metropolitan Water District provides wholesale water for about half of all Californians. While the LA Fire Department has seen only two graduating classes in the last six years, so this latest graduation ceremony comes with a lot of fanfare. We turn once again to Anna Marcos.
They march in, ready to take on the job of becoming a firefighter with the LA Fire Department. This is only the second graduating class of LA firefighter recruits since 2009. A solemn occasion, but one filled with family warmth and support. And it's the families who give the firefighters their badges.
Going forward, you're gonna have a badge on your chest representing the LAFD. It's widely known that we're the finest department in the United States, some say the world.
The new firefighters show off some of the hard-won skills that earned them their badge over the rigorous 20-week training.
A dream doesn't become a reality through magic. It takes sweat, determination, and hard work. Therefore, I urge you to sweat.
Firefighting is a dangerous and demanding profession, and your presence here today suggests that you have accepted this risk.
Only a select few of these firefighters make it through the training. Out of 43 original recruits, only 29 are here today.
I just tried my hardest on everything, gave 100%, but I'd like to thank my fellow recruits because, you know, we all push each other so hard to be our best.
There will be those days that are extraordinary ones, where you save a life, where you save property, where someone comes to you and gives you a hug unsolicited, thanking you for what you have done in their family's history. But there'll be those tough days, too, and I want you to capture the feeling that you have because every single day of being a Los Angeles firefighter is a privilege.
And with a toss of their hats, these recruits are now full-fledged firefighters, ready to save a life at a moment's notice. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
And with new firefighters on the job, their safety, along with the safety of all Angelenos, is the top priority for LAFD officials. That's why they're reaching out to communities and encouraging them to do their part during wildfire season. With black smoke billowing high into the air, this fast-moving brush fire in Granada Hills last month scorched nearly 40 acres. More than 200 firefighters battled the blaze on the ground and in the air. Fortunately, no homes were damaged and no one was hurt. And fire officials want to keep it that way as we head into fire season by encouraging all Angelenos to be wildfire-ready.
Have a plan, and when they ask you to evacuate, evacuate because they are so fast-moving that you would be surprised how fast it is, and you don't want to be surprised.
Fire officials recently held a wildfire community preparedness day at Fire Station 12 at Highland Park. The event is a national program that aims to teach individuals how to get ready and prepare for wildfire season.
I think it's really important to learn what we can do to protect our homes and our neighbors and our city.
The LAFD works year-round to inspect high-fire severity zones, but they can't prevent all fires from breaking out. So officials are urging everyone to do their part to keep branches and foliage trimmed and all brush maintained.
Wildfires, well, they're very dangerous and they spread fast.
Fire officials say all brush and vegetation should be no more than three inches tall and at least 200 feet clear of any structures. Trees and branches should also be kept 10 feet away from your chimney.
Basically, what we're trying to do is create that area so that in case you have combustible materials around your roof, pine needles and things like that, you want to keep off of your roof so that flames and sparks don't jump from roof to roof and from property to property.
Officials hope that by spreading the word, we can all get ahead of the flames. Plans to build a bike bridge connecting Atwater Village to Silver Lake has cyclists excited, but pedestrians, well, that's a different story. We turn once again to Gil Reyes. Gil?
That's right, Yana. That proposed bike-and-pedestrian bridge would be designed using existing infrastructure that was built way back in the day when the red trolley rolled through here, but some area residents are concerned about pedestrian safety.
This is history happening because Mitch O'Farrell makes it happen.
LA City Councilman and avid cyclist Tom Labonge, excited over plans to build a bike path on both sides of this iconic bridge. The Glendale Hyperion Bridge overlooking the LA River will soon undergo earthquake retrofitting. The plan also calls for permanent bike paths linking Atwater Village to Silver Lake, the idea spearheaded by Councilman Mitch O'Farrell.
It has been my goal and my mission to connect the neighborhoods as never before.
We cannot have a bridge that's gonna be there for 100 years and not have sidewalks on both sides.
Dabora Murphy from the group LA Walks and roughly 1,200 others have signed petitions against a Bureau of Engineering recommendation. The problem is not the proposed bike bridge. Everyone we talked to loves that idea. It's just that one of two pedestrian sidewalks would have to be removed to make room.
Removing that sidewalk is going to force me to have to walk a half a mile out of the way just to get to this beautiful red car park and this bridge.
Don Ward says the alternative would be either to walk on bike paths where he could be hit by a cyclist, or even worse, walk in traffic where he could be hit by a car. He suspects other pedestrians would do the same if the sidewalk is yanked.
We want to make Los Angeles a place where pedestrians can get around, where people can choose to walk.
City crews hope to break ground in July 2018 and hope to have it finished within three to four years after that. Yana?
Gil, thanks. Councilman O'Farrell has supported the placement of synchronized pedestrian crosswalks on the bridge to make walking safer. While this week, we continue our look at the city's new initiative called City Link LA, an initiative that officials say will help LA businesses grow and prosper. In today's digital age, high-speed internet and Wi-Fi have become an essential utility in order to compete in the global marketplace. But here in Los Angeles, many business owners face additional financial hardships when they have to constantly upgrade their high-speed internet in order to operate. Business advocates say it puts them in a tough spot.
You have to think, am I gonna get Wi-Fi, or do I give someone that's in badly need of a raise, a raise? What do I do?
On top of that, city councilmember Bob Blumenfield says businesses have taken drastic measures to stay competitive. Some have left Los Angeles altogether, while others haven't come at all because LA's virtual infrastructure isn't up to speed. He says businesses need to know that in LA, they can operate and stay competitive using the highest broadband speeds available. And in order to do that, city leaders are embarking on a new initiative called City Link LA.
What that does for the businesses that are here, it makes them super-competitive. It makes them not only competitive locally, but it makes them be able to compete around the world, and that's really exciting.
City Link LA seeks to provide affordable and reliable high-speed internet and Wi-Fi to all LA residents and businesses, regardless of income or neighborhood. The Valley Economic Alliance, a nonprofit that seeks to elevate and support local businesses, has already reached out to thousands of local shop owners to find out how the initiative can help them.
From their input, we're able to go ahead and provide that information back to City Link LA in order to go ahead in developing a more robust system.
A more robust system that officials hope will make LA a place where businesses can not only operate, but thrive. A Los Angeles city landmark turns 80 years old, a special honor for a city council member, and new housing for military veterans. Those stories and more in City Beat. Outgoing city councilmember Tom Labonge recently celebrated the Griffith Observatory's 80 years of public service. Observatory director Dr. E.C. Cruff, employees, and community members were on hand to mark the occasion on the north steps of the observatory building, complete with a birthday cake.
This is the beauty of where this building sits, and to think in 1935 when completed, what a gift it was to Los Angeles.
The Griffith Observatory sits on the south-facing slope of Mount Hollywood. The land was donated to the City of Los Angeles by Colonel Griffith J. Griffith in 1896. In his will, Griffith donated funds to build an observatory, exhibit hall, and planetarium on the donated land. Admission has been free since its opening in 1935. From honoring a city landmark to being honored himself, councilmember Labonge was recognized during the 21st Annual Treasures of Los Angeles Luncheon fundraiser for his years of dedication and service to the City of Los Angeles. Held at the Westin Bonaventure Hotel, councilmember Jose Huizar did the honors and handed Labonge his well-deserved plaque. Council president Herb Wesson and former LA Mayor Antonio Villarosa were also on hand, as well as LA World Airport's executive director Gina Marie Lindsay, who also received honors. Hosted by the Central City Association of Los Angeles, the luncheon recognizes those Angelenos who have made outstanding contributions to the city. New housing for veterans is taking shape in Cypress Park. Councilmember Gil Sadio, along with other city departments, broke ground on the Marmion Way Apartments, a 49-unit, four-story, affordable housing complex that will house veterans and their families. The project is scheduled to be move-in-ready in 2016. LA City Council voted to officially designate the famed Norm's Diner on Los Yenego Boulevard as a historic cultural monument. The diner is slated for demolition, but now further review by city leaders would be required before the property's new owners take any steps to tear it down. There was an outpouring of support from city council members, community activists, and fans of the establishment who rallied to preserve Norm's and its unique Googie-style LAPD Chief Charlie Beck marks a milestone. Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti applauds city council's support of the minimum wage hike and a chance to win tickets for Sesame Street Live. Here's this week in tweets. On his Twitter page, Chief Charlie Beck linked to a short video clip of his special day as he received his 40-year pin from Police Commissioner Steve Soboroff, celebrating his four decades of service to the residents of Los Angeles. LAPD HQ tweeted a pic of Beck with Soboroff and then making remarks at the podium. LAPD HQ also recognized other service members who received honors by tweeting #LAPDceremony. Congrats to all the recipients of service pins. Honorees all served 30-plus years. LAFD Chief Tarazas tweeted, "Congrats on 40 years, Chief Beck." In other tweets, following the minimum wage vote, Mayor Eric Garcetti's office tweeted, "We did it, LA. #RaiseTheWageLA has passed, City Council." The LA Zoo also tweeted an adorable pic of Rosie the Baby Hippo taking a ride on Mom. The zoo posted, "It's the only way to travel." And LA Live tweeted, "A chance for you to win a family four-pack to see Sesame Street's Let's Dance Live on May 30th or 31st. Click on the link and fill out your information." And that's a look at this week in tweets. A treasure hunt in the forest, a journey back in time through a historic LA neighborhood, and the stars and stripes take center stage. These stories in this week's Things to Do. It's time for a magical afternoon in the Griffith Park Forest. Bring your kids to a Fairy Hunts: A Mermaid's Tale performance and Queen's birthday party on Saturday, May 30th. Get whisked away in a family adventure with a treasure hunt, circle time with a fairy queen, dancing, games, fairy unicorn card readings, fairy face painting, snacks, frolic, and lots of fun. Tickets for the show and party are $25 per person; it's $15 a ticket for show-only or party-only. Groups and birthdays are welcome. The fun begins at 10:30 at Griffith Park, Ferndale, located at 2333 Ferndale Drive. The birthday party begins at 11:30 a.m. Reservations are suggested. For more information and to buy tickets, visit afairyhunt.com. Go back in time with a look into LA's past. Photographs showcasing the transformation of a historic Los Angeles neighborhood are showcased in the exhibit Bunker Hill in the Rearview Mirror: The Rise, Fall, and Rise Again of an Urban Neighborhood, are currently on display at the Central Library in downtown. The exhibit features 33 images in addition to new articles and recollections illustrating the complex story of Bunker Hill, from its posh heyday in the 1880s to its post-World War II decline and subsequent redevelopment in the 1960s and 1970s. The exhibit is located on the first-floor gallery, 630 West Fifth Street. For more, visit lapl.org. Experience patriotism on a whole new level with a new William Pope L. Trinket exhibit at the Museum of Contemporary Art. This larger-than-life American flag represents the recent work of the Chicago-based artist. The exhibition features large-scale installations and a new performance and sculpture work. The centerpiece of the show is Trinket, a monumental, custom-made American flag approximately 54 by 16 feet, hanging on a pole in the middle of the Geffen. The flag will be continuously blown by four large-scale industrial fans, the type used on Hollywood film sets to create wind or rain effects, and will be illuminated from below by a bank of custom theatrical lights. Over time, the flag will appear to fray at its ends due to the constant whipping of the forced air. This is the largest museum presentation of Pope L.'s work to date. It's on display now through June 28th. Don't miss it. The Geffen Contemporary at Moca is located at 152 North Central Avenue. For more information, visit moca.org. And that's a look at some things to do. And that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Please, don't lose. Obey all the rules of the road.
Don't hurt me this way. Don't touch me this way.
When a physical encounter occurs between man and machine, the machine always wins. Please, don't lose. Obey all the rules of the road.
Don't let me make the same mistake again.
Don't worry Patty, this isn't gonna hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel Thirty-Five. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Good morning, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. I'm Mitchell Englander. I want to welcome you today. Today is Friday, May twenty-ninth. And before we get started, we have a number of special guests and presentations, and we'd like to first start off with Councilmember Bob Blumenfield. The floor is yours. Good morning.
Stand behind me here.
Before you start, Mr. Blumenfield, I'd like to ask if there are people in the aisles? Keep the aisles clear. I'm only gonna give that warning one time, and we're gonna ask if you stand in the aisles, if you're not part of the presentation or at the podium speaking, you'll be escorted out of council chambers. This meeting will not be disrupted today, so we can get through this agenda. We've got a lot of the people's work to do. Thank you so much. Mr. Blumenfield, good morning.
Great, good morning. Thank you, Council President. Good morning, members of the City Council and guests. Today, I have the distinct honor and privilege to have with me Mr. Joe Molina. Joe Molina and his company, JMPR Public Relations Incorporated, have been a community powerhouse in Woodland Hills for over thirty-seven years. Everyone who knows Joe knows the hard work and dedication he has, not only to his clients, but to the city of Los Angeles, and in particular, to the community of Woodland Hills. Joe and his company have represented over six-hundred-and-fifty clients, ranging from Architectural Digest, to Paramount Pictures, to Lamborghini, Bentley, and Infinity. Some small, little companies you might have heard of. More than thirty-seven years ago, Joe had a vision to create a virtual newsroom in reverse, and has, over time, adapted that philosophy for the digital and social media age. He is the creative force behind many of JMPR's leading consumer campaigns, and also serves as a twenty-four-hour counsel to clients around the world for anything that might change public perception of the brand. Fascinated by the news media since childhood, Joe began his career as a rock journalist before transitioning to PR. However, it was his love of automobiles, not music, which ultimately directed the path in which his career would follow. He not only has high-end automotive manufacturers as his client, but he's also a huge fan of industrial design, and his free time collects automobiles and has even helped launch the Peterson Automotive Museum in Los Angeles in nineteen ninety-four, and the inaugural Connected Car Expo in twenty thirteen. Being someone of a Renaissance person, he collects contemporary art and vintage photography. To help recognize and honor Joe for his tremendous achievements, contributions, and involvement in the city of Los Angeles and the West Valley, two weeks ago, I was happy to declare May thirteenth as the official Joe Molina Day in the community of Woodland Hills. Congratulations, Joe, and thank you for your help working to make the valley a better place to live, work, and do business. Thank you for all the members of your team that are here, your family, the team. We really, we appreciate all you do for our community. We appreciate that you're part of the bedrock of Woodland Hills and the West Valley, and that you've done so much for so many. I want to present you with a small token of appreciation. Get you a little look at it before we take a picture here. It's not only for me, Bob Blumenfield, you're a council member, but it's signed by all of the City Council members, as well as the mayor. So please accept this small token of appreciation. And we'll take a little photo here. Great? Thank you. You wanna say a quick word?
Sure.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to say thank you to everybody on the City Council, everybody in this room. I'd like to say thank you to my family, and most importantly, to my staff, both past and extremely happy with all the people here from the present staff. For those of you who don't know, we are sort of the big company that promotes a lot of things that people don't need, they want. And as they said, we've represented people from everywhere, from Bentley to Lamborghini to Bugatti. We're the PR firm for the LA Auto Show, once again. I'm a lifelong car collector, and when I was a young kid, all the buildings here in downtown LA were like the Emerald City. And coming here was like a journey to Oz. And we've been lucky for the last almost thirty-eight years to represent the toys and the things that people dream about, and I want to say thank you for making all our dreams come true. And again, thank you to my staff, thank you to my family, thank you to everybody who's helped make us what we are today, and we hope to make more dreams come true. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, Joe, when the Dodgers were here, they gave us all T-shirts, and you'd said you represent Bugatti? Is that...
Yes.
Okay, so...
They're out front.
Out front, all right. Thank you, thank you for all your years in the city of Los Angeles as well. Really appreciate it, Bob. Thanks for bringing them here, too. Thank you. Big round of applause to Joe and your staff as well. Thank you. Alrighty, so, Mr. Clerk, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield, Bonnabuske, Nocedio, and Dr. Fuentes, Uzair, Caressa, Corinna, LaBange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Weston, eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. We are live on the internet, streaming on Channel Thirty-Five as well, and you can listen in on council phone. Let's go ahead and go through the first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Blumenfield moves, Bonn in seconds. Next item, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember LaBange moves, Ms. Martinez seconds. Next items, please.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, there are recommendations to continue items seventeen and eighteen to June tenth, and items thirty-four and thirty-five to June fifth.
Okay, that'll be the order without objection. Thank you very much.
Very good, sir. Further, inasmuch as the mayor has signed the budget, there is no need for today's special meeting.
Okay, then, without objection, members, we're gonna go ahead and cancel the special meeting, since there's no need to do that, and the mayor has signed the budget. Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Very good, sir. Item one is an item notice for public hearing. We do have cards on that matter.
We'll go ahead and hold that on the desk for cards.
Items two and three are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for both items have been circulated.
Members, do we have any specials on two and three? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll. We're slowing down for a minute, letting the computer systems catch up. We're good? Okay. We'll go ahead, and we're on cutting-edge nineteen eighty-four technology, so we gotta let the systems catch up sometimes. We'll go ahead, and we open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Love it, Oz.
Thank you very much. Those are approved, and congratulations to the commissioner as well.
Items four through seven are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those are before us. Okay, that'll be the order, and we have items for...
Sir, we have cards on all items.
I figured as much. It's Friday. So with that, members, do you also have any of those special that I would call on first? Seeing none, we'll hold those on the desk for cards. Next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, items eight through fourteen are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, then, those items are noticed for public hearing. We have cards on those as well.
Cards on number eight, sir.
Okay, and then the balance of the items, and those are ordinance as well, are before us. Members, do we have any specials on those items? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Let me know when you're ready. Ready? Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve, Oz.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items fifteen through twenty-eight are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, those have been... We're gonna hold twenty-four on the desk for me, and then twenty-five for Mr. LaBange. Members, any other items? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Waiting for the thumbs up? We got it? All right, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve, Oz.
Those are approved. Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Items twenty-nine through thirty-nine are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those are considered before us, members. Thank you very much. And do we have any cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-six, and thirty-eight.
Okay, on the balance of those items, members, do we have specials? Mr. LaBange. Mr. LaBange is leaving the chambers. We're good? Okay, on the balance of those items, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve, Oz.
Those are approved. Thank you very much. All right. Next items, please.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations, or items called special.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go through presentations now. We've got Councilman Price. The floor is yours for a special presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so excited to be here today to commemorate a special milestone for a very special place, the ninetieth anniversary of LA Trade Tech College. LA Trade Tech College has great stats to boast about. The school serves about twelve thousand students per semester, including seventeen hundred veterans, fourteen hundred foster youth, at least six hundred dreamers, and several thousand formerly incarcerated individuals. And the median age for students here is about twenty-seven. So we know that Trade Tech offers not only specialized training, but also gives folks in our community a chance to reinvent themselves and pursue better careers. But what the college, what sets this college apart, however, is the special role they play as a partner in our efforts to revitalize South Los Angeles. It was my honor to work with President Larry Frank and VP Leticia Barajas, and the entire Trade Tech team on our recent South LA Promise Zone application. While we didn't win, it was an exciting and inspiring process that brought together more than a hundred community organizations to the table to develop a roadmap for economic revitalization in our community. When the process started, no one thought we could make that happen, but the folks here at Trade Tech College stepped up to the challenge. It meant hours of work, but they did it because they believed in the potential of our community, and they've been real partners with us in our mission to improve the quality of life, not only in the ninth district, and not only in South LA, but throughout our whole community. So without further ado, I'd like to ask Trade Tech President Larry Frank, who's no stranger to this chamber, to say a few words, and to... He's brought some special guests to help us celebrate the importance of this ninetieth anniversary celebration. President Frank.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Honorable council members, it is a pleasure to be back, representing Los Angeles Trade Tech College, which is an amazing institution I've got to learn in the last two years. So ninety years ago, Frank Wiggins, who is the CEO of the LA Chamber for twenty-five years, believed that the only way that LA was gonna be a great city is if it had a great vocational education program. And he died in nineteen twenty-four. The next year, the LA School District put aside a million dollars to build the Frank Wiggins Trade School, which is now the Abe Friedman Occupational Center, which is where Trade Tech began. About twenty-five years later, they ended up moving onto the grounds of Polytechnic High School, the second high school in the LA School District, right? And which Tom Bradley was one of their most famous graduates, right? From Polytechnic High School. Polytechnic went to Sun Valley, and the whole campus in the fifties ended up becoming LA Trade Tech College. So Frank Wiggins Trade School, Polytechnic High School, Trade Tech, there we have it, right? And it's been true to its vision for all of these ninety years, focused on career technical education, the most career tech ed in any community college west of the Mississippi. So it's amazing partnerships that exist between the city. I don't know you know what number of your staff and managers actually teach at Trade Tech, in water operations, in pavement science, right? In our pole-climbing school, and a number of places. So there's a lot of partnerships that exist between the city. We're very proud of it. We have a workforce center on our campus, a youth source center on our campus. It's an amazing partnership that exists with the city. I'm gonna turn this over real quick to a VP who has something to say, thanks to you guys, and then also a student to speak. But here with us today, we have our vice presidents, we have our deans, we have faculty. John McDowell here, head of the Labor Center at Trade Tech for thirty-six years, he's founder, staff, and I just wanted to thank you for letting us come and join you today for a minute. So Leticia Barajas, Vice President, Academic Affairs, Workforce Development.
Once again, we want to thank you all for your support for our South Los Angeles Transit Empowerment Zone application. But I'm here today to introduce two fabulous students, because our core business is education. So I want to introduce Darnell Banner. Darnell Banner is a second-year collision student, and like many of our students with over fifteen hundred vets, he is a formal, he is a vet, having served in the Marines. But also, I want to point out, I also want to acknowledge Andre Morgan. Andre Morgan, like many of our South Los Angeles residents, is here for a second opportunity to really restart their lives. And so with over twenty-one thousand students, and with the awesome support of our Councilman Price, I'd like to introduce once again, Darnell Banner.
Good morning. Yes, my name is Darnell Banner, and I'm very grateful to be here today. Thank you for having us. And I want to say that after my prior service in the Marine Corps, I'm very happy to be here and, at the same time, win these awards here and represent Los Angeles Trade Tech. They've helped me out with my transition back into the civilian life, and I'm grateful for everything that I've learned at this great college, and that's pretty much it. Thank you.
So Darnell is a silver medal winner, the State Skills USA. We have twelve gold medal winners, and twelve silver and bronze medal winners. They're going to the national championship. We won four medals last year at the National Skills USA Championship, but they're on their way.
Fantastic. We've got a couple council members that would like to speak, and Councilmember Sadio?
Mr. President, congratulations. For ninety years, you look pretty good. Well, you're not exactly cited in my district. You serve my district, the first district just west of the freeway. And regardless of whatever your scores or results were, you remain the Promise Zone for young men and women who, in this ever-changing economy, you provide the oasis, the location, the site is where people can go and adapt to an ever-changing economy. And that's, you're an invaluable asset and jewel for the city of Los Angeles, and so I thank you for your leadership and your commitment to improving the city. John McDowell, you have demonstrated over your years a commitment to quality and excellence, and that is the utmost importance as, again, in an ever-changing dynamic, ever-changing economy. It's not easy to shepherd your way through... Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items fifteen through twenty-eight are items for public carings have been held.
Okay, those have been, uh, we're gonna hold twenty-four on the desk. For me, and then twenty-five for Mr. Labonge. Members, any other items? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Waiting for the thumbs up? We got it? All right, close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Items twenty-nine through thirty-nine are items for which public carings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those are considered before us, members. Thank you very much. And do we have any cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-six, and thirty-eight.
Okay, on the balance of those items, members, do we have specials? Mr. Labonge. Mr. Labonge is leaving the chambers. We're good? Okay, on the balance of those items, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Thank you very much. All right. Next items, please.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Our items called special.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go through presentations now. We've got Councilman Price. The floor is yours for a special presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Good morning. Thank you.
I'm so excited to be here today to commemorate a special milestone for a very special place. The ninetieth anniversary of L.A. Trade Tech College. L.A. Trade Tech College has great stats to boast about. The school serves about twelve thousand students per semester, including seventeen hundred veterans, fourteen hundred foster youth, at least six hundred dreamers, and several thousand formerly incarcerated individuals. And the median age for students here is about twenty-seven. So we know that Trade Tech offers not only specialized training, but also gives folks in our community a chance to reinvent themselves and pursue better careers. But what the college, what sets this college apart, however, is the special role they play as a partner in our efforts to revitalize South Los Angeles. It was my honor to work with President Larry Frank and VP Letizia Barajas and the entire Trade Tech team on our recent South L.A. Promise Zone application. While we didn't win, it was an exciting and inspiring process that brought together more than a hundred community organizations to, to the table to develop a roadmap for economic revitalization in our community. When the process started, no one thought we could make that happen. But the folks here at Trade Tech College stepped up to the challenge. It meant hours of work, but they did it because they believe in the potential of our community, and they've been real partners with us in our mission to improve the quality of life, not only in the Ninth District, and not only in South L.A., but throughout our whole s- community. So without further ado, I'd like to ask Trade Tech President Larry Frank, who's no stranger to this chamber, to say a few words and to, he's brought some special guests to help us celebrate the importance of this ninetieth anniversary celebration. President Frank.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Honorable council members, it is a pleasure to be back representing Los Angeles Trade Tech College, which is an amazing institution I've got to learn in the last two years. So ninety years ago, Frank Wiggins, who is the CEO of the L.A. Chamber for twenty-five years, believed that the only way that L.A. was gonna be a great city is if it had a great vocational education program. And he died in nineteen twenty-four. The next year, the L.A. School District put aside a million dollars to build the Frank Wiggins Trade School, which is now the Abe Friedman Occupational Center, which is where Trade Tech began. About twenty-five years later, they ended up moving onto the grounds of Polytechnic High School, the second high school in the L.A. School District. Right, and which Tom Bradley was one of their most famous graduates, right? From Polytechnic High School. Polytechnic went to Sun Valley, and the whole campus in the fifties ended up becoming L.A. Trade Tech College. So Frank Wiggins Trade School, Polytechnic High School, Trade Tech, there we have it. Right, and it's been true to its vision for all of these ninety years, focused on career technical education, the most career tech ed in any community college west of the Mississippi. So it's amazing partnerships that exist between the city. I don't know you know what number of your staff and managers actually teach at Trade Tech in water operations, in pavement science, right, in our pole climbing school, and a number of places. So there's a lot of partnerships that exist between the city. We're very proud of it. We have a workforce center on our campus, a youth source center on our campus. It's a amazing partnership that exists with the city. I'm gonna turn this over real quick to a VP who has something to say, thanks to you guys, and then also a student to speak. But here with us today, we have our vice presidents, we have our deans, we have faculty. John McDowell here, head of the Labor Center at Trade Tech for thirty-six years, he's founder, staff. And I just wanted to thank you for letting us come and join you today for a minute. So Letizia Barajas, Vice President, Academic Affairs, Workforce Development.
Once again, we want to thank you all for your support for our South Los Angeles Transit Empowerment Zone application. But I'm here today to introduce two fabulous students, because our core business is education. So I want to introduce Darnell Banner. Darnell Banner is a second-year collision student. And like many of our students with over fifteen hundred vets, he is a formal, he is a vet, having served in the Marines. But also, I want to point out, I also want to acknowledge Andre Morgan. Andre Morgan, like many of our South Los Angeles residents, is here for a second opportunity to really restart their lives. And so with over twenty-one thousand students and with the awesome support of our Councilman Price, I'd like to introduce once again, Darnell Banner.
Good morning. Yes, my name is Darnell Banner, and I'm very grateful to be here today. Thank you for having us. And I want to say that after my prior service in the Marine Corps, I'm very happy to be here and, at the same time, win these awards here and represent Los Angeles Trade Tech. They've helped me out with my transition back into the civilian life, and I'm grateful for everything that I've learned at this, at this great college, and that's pretty much it. Thank you.
So Darnell is a silver medal winner, the State Skills USA. We have twelve gold medal winners and twelve silver and bronze medal winners. They're going to the national championship. We won four medals last year at the National Skills USA Championship, but they're on their way.
Fantastic. We've got a couple council members on that would like to speak, and Councilmember Sadio.
Mr. President, congratulations. For ninety years, you look pretty good. Well, you're not exactly cited in my district. You serve my district, the first district just west of the freeway. And regardless of whatever your scores or results were, you remain the promise zone for young men and women who, in this ever-changing economy, you provide the oasis, the location, the site is where people can go and adapt to an ever-changing economy. And that's, you're an invaluable asset and jewel for the city of Los Angeles. And so I thank you for your leadership and your commitment to improving the city. John McDowell, you have demonstrated over your years, a commitment to quality and excellence. And that is the utmost importance as, again, in an ever-changing dynamic, ever-changing economy. It's not easy to, to shepherd your way through all these changes and to have the quality of leadership that emanates from the Trade Tech. And I hear it all the time. And I hear it in your, your, people who are involved in fashion and design and, and those areas, who come to me and talk about the quality of education and how it was the basis for their, their new careers. You do a wonderful job for the city, and as I said, I thank you. On behalf of my constituents just west of the freeway who look east to you as their promise zone. So congratulations. Happy birthday.
And Councilmember Labonge.
Sir, great to stand up for Trade Tech. I want to give a special shout-out to your cross-country team who practices righteously and religiously in Griffith Park, which is so important, and it's very important to have athletics in our community colleges. And Larry, the great job you did in running down the whole history. When L.A. Unified was formed, and it truly was a special day, the community colleges were run by the, by the School Board of Los Angeles. And the teachers moved up and forth. Some of my greatest teachers, because it was right when that changed, were, were L.A. Unified's teachers who were then-now community college. Jerry Brown's first political job was Los Angeles Community College Board, and he lived on Lucille near Sunset, on the south side of Sunset. I just want to throw that out for the governor. But Trade School is so important. And it's the trades that built this world. You know, it's the trades that do it all, and I like to brag, Mr. Sadio, that I graduated from high school in two and a half years. And the, the negative of that, I missed an All-Star game in the Coliseum, so that was a negative, Mr. Sadio. But the positive was, it was the trade schools, West Valley Occupation out by Pierce College. I got fifteen credits for the Summer of Love in sixty-nine. When everybody was at Woodstock, I was at Trade School, learning how to run a printing press. So for me and everybody, it's so important. And one motion, and I want Avoc to write it for me here, is that we do have Saturday Skills class. Because as Larry just mentioned, our president of Trade Tech, is that there were opportunities given back then that aren't, are forgotten. People retire, or they, they don't call the same play. This is so important, whether it's at Piper Technical Center or at Trade Tech, or whatever, there's occupational trades that we can learn for our young men and women to get great jobs, not just for the city of Los Angeles, or the county, or the state of California, but in the private industry. So let's hear it for that, and I will need a second on that, Mr. Sadio. And I hope you will second that motion. Thank you, Mr. Price, and I'm so happy what you're doing about the transit corridor, because now I feel like I'm in a different place now for all that's happening, the Expo line and the great work that you're doing. Give Mr. Price a big hand. Thank you.
Yes. Wait, one more, and Mr. Coretts as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be a little shorter than my colleague, Mr. Labonge. I, I just wanted to give a shout-out to,
He is.
And always will be. Shout-out to a couple taller friends of mine, Larry Frank and John McDowell. Good to see you both here. And I just want to say, Trade Tech has done so much good. You've trained so many people. You've had a massive economic impact on the city of Los Angeles. And a lot of the people that you've trained have been given second chances and a great second opportunity at a career. This is an entity that's done so much good in ninety years and continues to do it. So I just wanted to commend you for everything that you've done and everything that you do.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Price.
Labonge, the Summer of Love, I was at El Camino Junior College, just, just for the record. And I taught at Southwest College for a minute, so.
I wasn't born yet.
So we support the unique role that community colleges play in our community. And we're just, again, excited and thrilled to acknowledge ninety years of service that L.A. Trade Tech College has had. And let me just present this, Mr. President, to you and to the team. And on behalf of the grateful community, we wish you ninety more years of service and success in our community. Congratulations.
Right, thank you very much. And Councilman Price, I want to add to that, that the Trade Tech and Trade College schools now are so important, so critically important here in Los Angeles. When I went to high school, we had those shop classes and woodshop and metal shop and home ec and plastics, automotive shop. And we've gotten rid of those in, in public schools. So you guys are filling the void that we desperately need to make sure that we have a trained future workforce here in Los Angeles. And I want to give you all yet another huge round of applause. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, there's been a request to send item nineteen forthwith.
All right, item nineteen forthwith, the request came from?
Councilmember Parks.
Okay, that'll be the order without objection? Thank you. Yes, Mr. Bonin.
Could we send items three and thirty-two urgent forthwith, please?
Uh, no, we can, we cannot do that, sir. Yes. Urgent forthwith?
Yes.
Okay. Super urgent, okay, those will be urgent forthwith. I believe we need a vote on that then. So we'll go ahead and vote to send items three and thirty-two urgent forthwith per Councilmember Bonin. So if we can open the roll on that, and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That'll be the order. Thank you very much. Okay. Mitch O'Farrell. Councilmember O'Farrell, the floor is yours for a special presentation. The good Mitch on the council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are there any Los Angeles live theater fans in the house today? There you go. So we're, we are very used to public theater and political theater in this chamber. But there is a larger world of thriving theater across the city of Los Angeles, and that is why we're here today. Colleagues, Councilmember Labonge and I are acknowledging this incredible movement that has been in existence for several decades now. As someone who moved to Los Angeles in nineteen eighty-two to launch a career in acting and a former member of some of the theaters along Theater Row that I now have the privilege of representing on the City Council, which was formerly in the fourth district and it is now an area that I share with my colleague, Tom Labonge. It has, along that stretch of Santa Monica Boulevard, has hosted countless productions over the years. Many of the notable artists who got their start on Hollywood Theater Row include George Clooney, Octavia Spencer, Noah Wiley, Chris Pine, Sarah Michelle Gellar, Jack Black, Molly Shannon, Sherri Shepherd, and many, many more. Colleagues, you joined us unanimously a few months ago in passing my motion acknowledging Santa Monica Boulevard at Wilcox Avenue as Hollywood Theater Row. I am pleased that on Monday, this coming Monday, June first, at one o'clock, we will be officially unveiling the commemorative signs at Santa Monica and Wilcox, officially declaring that intersection as Hollywood Theater Row. And you are all invited to join us. Hollywood Theater Row is a hub of creative energy that contributes positively, not just to the local culture, but to the local economy as well. Arts and culture are good for the Los Angeles economy. We have seen the positive effects of live theater, not just in Hollywood, but across this city. In fiscal year twenty-fourteen fifteen, the Department of Cultural Affairs awarded a total of three-hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars in grant funding to fifty-five theaters across the city in every council district. This represents fifteen percent of the total grant funding awarded by DCA this fiscal year. I'd like to thank DCA for that generous focus on live theater. The fifty-five theaters that received city grant funding played host to a total of three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-four audience members this fiscal year. That shows how massive of a reach live theater has across our city. Additionally, nonprofit theaters match city investments on average of six to one for the services rendered. In this fiscal year alone, local theaters leveraged over two million dollars into the local economy. That helps our small business community, that helps our streets be more vibrant and more filled with life, which is what we all want. In addition, in this year's budget, there is funding for a position that I have fought for since being on the City Council. The Performing Arts Director. This position will improve oversight, management, outreach, and development of new public-private partnerships for live theater in Los Angeles. It's about time we have this position in place.
That's right.
Thank you. As a champion of small businesses myself, working artists, and a rich cultural scene, it is my privilege to acknowledge the importance of live theater across the city and to give special recognition to this creative hub within the thirteenth district, Hollywood Theater Row, and of course, as I said, way beyond. Joining me for remarks are my colleague, our colleague, Tom Labonge, who's championed this area for decades, and a few dignitaries from the community that I can't wait to get to. First, let me introduce our colleague and friend, Tom Labonge.
Oh, thank you very much. The key, the key, Julie, 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 do you hear me, Julie? The key in life is that we have a baton in our hands, just like Trade Tech, and just how our president of Trade Tech spoke, Frank Wiggins, to Andrew, Abraham Friedman, to now Trade Technical College, all of that transformation was there. In Theater Row, and I remember so many people looking for the late, great John Farrell in theaters along the cave, the cave down on El Centro, right there, and the cast, the cast, and what a great guy, and he's up in heaven, and I want to remember his name momentarily. But this is the beauty of our city as people are creative. And right here on the stage, someone from Garfield High School will come across the Sixth Street Bridge and find their way. They'll come from Roosevelt, maybe they'll stop at City Hall and see Mr. Sadio. But it's the opportunity that you create in this whole mechanism of these ninety-nine-seat theaters. And I'm just proud that you, Mr. O'Farrell, are taking the baton and doing it, just like Mr. Kokorian in NoHo, which is the district that Mr. Kokorian now has, where there's a lot of small theaters, and helping them, because they bring the coffee shops and the life to the streets. And all the stuff that Mr. Garcetti wants in Green Street you ought to got, but now you got a sign. And it was the Jay Giles Band that said, "Sign, sign, everywhere a sign." So let there be the Hollywood Theater Row. Hear, hear! Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I want to give a shout-out for Daniel Henning, who's coming up in a minute. And I especially want to give a shout-out to my deputy, Camila Blanche, who's off today, who did previous work on this. Give Camila a big hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next, I want to bring up a woman whose work I have admired for many years. In fact, I have a feeling that everyone in this chamber feels the same, and whom I now consider a friend, as well as a fellow passionate supporter of live theater and the arts, and an incredible leader in the live arts, live theater movement. Colleagues, many of you know this beautiful lady from her starring roles in two films that won the Oscar for Best Picture, Unforgiven in nineteen ninety-two, and a film a few of you might have heard about called Titanic in nineteen ninety-seven. She has also starred in dozens of other successful films and television shows. But right now, she is currently appearing in a play on Hollywood Theater Row, and it closes on Sunday. And I've got two tickets. I'm going. This shows her true devotion to the art form and underscores her reputation as a world-class artist. It gives me great pleasure and honor to welcome the luminous, lovely, talented, incredible actor, Frances Fisher.
Oh, my goodness. Hello, I'm Frances Fisher. Thank you to the City Council, and a special thank you to Tom Labonge and Mitch O'Farrell for being such great supporters of Los Angeles theater. I stand here representing the thousands and thousands of actors who work and live in Los Angeles. I started my career in New York City, doing off-off Broadway, off-Broadway and regional theater. I came out here in nineteen eighty-eight, and it was a desert. There was no theater happening. And then all of a sudden, these little theaters were popping up here and there and everywhere. And now, in two thousand and fifteen, we have over two hundred small theaters all over this city. And I gotta tell you guys, in between when my, my film and television work, I get back to the theater because that is where our roots are. That is where we feed ourselves, that is where we get the energy to give to the audience and have that special communication that doesn't happen in film and television. It only happens in the theater. And yes, I am appearing in, on Theater Row right now at the Hudson Backstages in My Child, Mothers of War. If anybody would like to come, let me know. You can get tickets online, and, Mr. President, if you would like a T-shirt like this.
Absolutely.
This T-shirt represents ninety-nine-seat theater. I love ninety-nine. Everyone here loves ninety-nine, and we love you for dedicating Hollywood Theater Row.
Thank you very much. We're not getting the Bugatti, so the T-shirt's gonna be great. Another presentation. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. How about a big round of applause for Frances Fisher? It is also a great pleasure to bring up someone who lives and works in the thirteenth district. This man is not only the founding artistic director of the Blank Theater in Hollywood on Theater Row, he also recognizes the importance of live theater across the city and the county. He created the Stay in Live Initiative, a coalition of theater, community, and government leaders to create the assured future of live theater in Hollywood and across Los Angeles. It is my privilege to introduce another great friend, one-of-a-kind artist, and champion for live theater, Daniel Henning.
Good morning. I am the founding artistic director of the Blank Theater. We've been in Hollywood since nineteen ninety and on Hollywood Theater Row since nineteen ninety-six. Thank you for your amazing recognition of Hollywood Theater Row today. I and my colleagues are deeply moved by your support. I especially want to thank Mitch O'Farrell and Tom Labonge for being such amazing champions of live theater in Los Angeles and for making this historic day happen. I also want to thank Camila Blanche, who first came up with this idea, and Dan Halden, who, both of them worked together tirelessly to make this happen.
Excuse me for one second. There's members of the audience that are being boisterous and booing and stomping their feet and waving their hands. That's disruptive. We're actually in the middle of the meeting right now. If you do it again, you're gonna be asked to leave. That will be the last time. Thank you.
On behalf of my colleagues on Hollywood Theater Row, starting with Charlie Chaplin, who built the first theater in the area in the nineteen forties, to the thousands of artists who've offered their wares along our little stretch of Santa Monica Boulevard since then, thank you for this great honor. The current residents of Hollywood Theater Row include the Hudson, the Elephant and the Lillian, the Blank Theater at Second Stage, Theater Asylum, McCadden and Lex Theaters, Studio C, Lounge Theaters, the LGBT Center Theaters, and the El Centro Stages. Los Angeles should be known as a major center of great theater in the nation. The opportunity exists to put Los Angeles on the map as the theater town that it already is, to show the world that this is a place that nurtures and supports the artists that are the future of the entertainment industry. Did you know that the economic benefits of having theaters in your community are astounding? For every ten jobs in the live theaters, they will produce nine jobs at outside businesses. For every dollar that is spent at a theater, seven to twelve additional dollars are spent in the surrounding community, parking, restaurants, bars, shopping, et cetera. We put more money into the pockets of our neighboring businesses than we do our own. Who doesn't want a neighbor like us? We can leverage our unique cultural assets in Hollywood and Los Angeles to enrich the quality of life for all residents and visitors from around the world. But we can't do that without you. The Los Angeles City Council has the opportunity to support live theater all throughout Los Angeles. There are live theaters in each of your districts, and they all need your support. I challenge you today to support your live theaters to the fullest extent possible. This recognition of Hollywood Theater Row is a wonderful step. Thank you again for this exciting support and the opportunity to address you on the importance of what we do in live theater in Los Angeles. Our movement is growing. The citizens of Los Angeles are taking notice of the intimate theaters that are the lifeblood of the entertainment industry and the lifeblood of the communities we serve. and the lifeblood of the communities we serve. We look forward to your continuing support. After all, we do theater for you, the citizens of Los Angeles, or as we like to refer to you, our audience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Daniel. What I'd like to do is acknowledge a few people standing with us today, as well as staff members from Tom Labange and my office, and they've been mentioned already, but my incredible Hollywood deputy, Dan Halden. And Tom's incredible cultural deputy, Camila Blanche, who isn't here today. And most of the following people are here, not everyone, but I'd like to thank Shawna McClure of Hollywood Arts Council, Lauren Gubler of the Hollywood Chamber, Stephen Whitten of the Hollywood Media Bid, Gil Smith of the Montalban Theater, Padreak Duffy of Sacred Fools Theater, Khanchan Mathu of Hollywood French Festival, which begins in a few weeks, Michael Sontag and John Copla of Studio C, Colin Erns of La La Land, Matt Quinn of Combined Art Form Theater Asylum, and John Heroto of Hollywood Heritage. Big round of applause for everyone. Again, don't forget to join us this coming Monday, 1 o'clock, for the official signed dedication of Hollywood Theater Row. And in closing, I'd like to present, Tom Labange and I, would like to present on behalf of the entire city leadership, a small but lovely framed certificate of our appreciation for all that you do in advance of the dedication of the sign on Monday for Hollywood Theater Row. Again, thank you so much, and let's enjoy live theater across Los Angeles.
And Mitch, 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 let's give a shout out. I forgot to Eric Taylor in the sign shop for making those great signs over at Piper Tech.
All right, members, while they're taking the photos. Item one, we're just going to go through some business now, is continued for 30 days, so without objection. That'll be the order. And item 34, yes, sir?
I'm sorry, sir. And for clarification, 30 days brings us to June 30th.
That's correct. And then on item 34 and 35, we'd like to continue those. We've already voted on them, so we're going to go ahead and reconsider those. 34 and 35. You will not be standing in the aisles. You can either sit or stand in the back. That's disrupting the meeting. It's in the council rules. And so if you need to stand in the aisles or be boisterous, you're disrupting this meeting, you'll be asked to leave council chambers. Thank you very much. 34 and 35 for reconsideration. Those will be before us for reconsideration, members. We'll go ahead and open the roll on 34 and 35. Close the roll and tabulate. Do not yell out at the meeting. That is the last warning. Mr. Walsh? Please do not yell at the meetings. Thank you. Yeah, and go ahead and tabulate the vote. Thank you very much.
13 ayes.
Mr. President, those matters are now before you.
Mr. Akala, please have a seat. Do not stand in the aisles. Please have a seat, sir. If you're not going to follow the rules, you'll be asked to leave. Please have a seat, sir. Now you're disrupting the meeting. Now you're going to yell out at the meeting, sir. You're going to be asked to leave, Mr. Hunt. You're disrupting this meeting. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and, we have another presentation. Council member... Oh, I'm sorry, they're still before us. We're going to go ahead and continue 34 and 35 to June 9th. Will be the order without objection. Excellent, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. With that, Councilmember Sadio. The floor is yours. Thank you. Excuse me for one second. Mr. Hunt, you're asked to leave the meeting now. I've asked you four times not to stand in the aisle, and that's what you've been doing, actually five times now. So, thank you very much, have a good day. Sergeants, if you could please show them out. You will not disrupt this meeting. We are trying to do the people's work here, and we have a busy agenda and some very special presentations, and guests as well. Have a nice weekend. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Mr. Sadio?
Yes.
The floor is yours. Excuse me for one second. He's still disrupting the meeting. I'd like the record to reflect that he's not leaving. And he's still yelling out from the back of the chambers. Thank you very much. Councilmember Sadio, good morning. The floor is yours. Thank you very much.
Good news. So, we're getting ready to celebrate the 10th anniversary of Loomis Day. Loomis Day is a festival that was created by the efforts of a coalition of art, art groups, and neighborhood associations, and organized entirely by unpaid volunteers to celebrate the life of Loomis. Loomis, the festival began, and it took its name from Charles Fletcher Loomis, who was in fact, the first editor of the Los Angeles Times in 1985. He was a prolific writer and a photographer. He documented much of the growth of the city from what's now called the Northeast. He was one of the city's first librarians. He was the founder of the Southwest Museum, the first museum of the city of Los Angeles. And he helped introduce the concept of multiculturalism, a concept that is so common and typical of our daily life in Los Angeles today. He was actually one of the persons who introduced that concept back in 1880s, I'm sorry, in the 1880s. Until his death in 1928, Charles Loomis remained active as a photographer, as an editor, a poet, a raconteur, and as an extraordinary champion of the Native American and Indigenous culture here in California. Today, I have with us the president of the Loomis Foundation, Maggie Barto, and founder Elliot Secular. But I wanted to show you, for the audience there, and I want to invite everybody to CD One next weekend. There's this incredible magazine that lays out pages, and pages, and pages, and pages of activities that we're going to have, including time to honor the native son of Northeast Los Angeles, Richard Duarte, who we have spoken about in the past, his recent passing. We're going to have one great weekend. And so I want to invite everybody to Northeast Los Angeles. There's several venues. We have these in our offices. We will be giving out information on our website, but I want to invite everybody to join us next weekend. Come over to Northeast Los Angeles, including, Mr. Weezer, including Bora Heights, which will join us this year as we expand the reach of the Loomis Festival. Bora Heights, Lincoln Heights, Highland Park, and other parts unknown. We will continue to celebrate this great leader of multiculturalism in the city of Los Angeles. With that, ladies first, Maggie. Hi, dear.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Sadio, thank you so much for this great honor. And to the city council, also thank you for this great honor. I would like to also thank Mr. Sadio, who's been extremely great in helping us out since he's been elected to his office. I would also like to thank Jose Weezer, who's continued support for Loomis Day, including the expansion to York Park and Boyle Heights. I would like to thank Mr. Labange for coming on his bicycle every year. We have bike racks, so I challenge all of you to come and visit us. I would like to introduce you to Elliot Secular, who is our president emeritus and the founder of Loomis Day. And we are excited to have our 10th anniversary this year.
Thank you, Maggie. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Sadio. Really, 10 years down the road. 10 years ago, we began Loomis Day in a sweltering heat wave on Sycamore Grove Park. We had a couple of hundred stragglers sitting in front of us, just dying in the sun in front of our stage. And today, we have hundreds of volunteers that are involved in this, some of whom, the organizers are here with us today, and I'll recognize them in a moment. We have, this year will present 39 artists, 39 performing bands over a three-day weekend. We have 19 poets reading their work. We have 30 artists in an exhibition that honors, as the council member noted, the late Richard Duarte, who was an important figure in Los Angeles art. We will have, it'll be a three-day, over five different sites. We could not do this without the support of the city of Los Angeles, without the support of the Department of Cultural Affairs, without Councilwoman Sadio's office, including his terrific field deputy, Sylvia Robledo. Thank you so much. And this year, we're expanding from a one-day festival to a three-day festival in five sites, including two sites in CD 14, with the assistance of our dear friend Jose Weezer, who has been with us for, really for 10 years, I think, you've been supporting this event, and his staff, who has just been remarkable in their assistance. Thank you very much, Jose, council member. We look forward every year to the attendance on bicycle of Councilmember Labange, who has been a frequent visitor of us. We hope to expand next year. We're looking at expanding to Atwater and to the, Councilman O'Farrell is out of the room right now, but he's somebody we certainly would like to talk to about expanding the festival. With us today, there are, some of our key organizers and volunteers have been with us for years, and I want to recognize them. Our board members, thank you. We have our vice president of community relations, Ivan Sarseda. We have our secretary Carmela Gomes. Doug Jacobs from Teatro Arroyo. We're really pleased to be following the theater presentation that just happened. We are also involved, involving theater with Teatro Arroyo and Casa 0101, which is a terrific theater group who will be presenting this year at our Loomis Day Festival. We have Heinrich Kaefer, who is our vice president of operations. Eddie Rivera, who has been with us since the very beginning. Jane Secular, our treasurer. And I think I got everybody. Did I get everybody? Okay, great, thank you. Again, I hope you'll, some of you will come down and see the festival this year. We start June 5th in Mariachi Plaza. We'll move over on June 6th to Southwest Museum with the Richard Duarte tribute. We'll also be at York Park, York Boulevard and Avenue 50 in the council member's, Weezer's district. And then on Sunday, our big event is at Loomis Home and at Sycamore Grove Park, where we have moved this year with the encouragement and help of Councilmember Sadio. So thank you very much for that, council member. See you all next weekend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. We have two members on the queue, Mr. Labange.
I want to rise for this great festival. I want to rise for the great graduate of Roosevelt High School. Did you have art at Roosevelt too, Gil?
Yes, I struggled through that.
I did too, but it got us to the way. And I know, Mr. Weezer, they taught everything at Silesian, so you're all right. Here's the key. This brings people to community, and you can get lost and found in LA. And what you're doing and transforming the area with the local artists, it's very, very special, and I love coming. And I'm very proud of the enjoyment I see of the people. Just on Memorial Day, and this is the point, Madam President, when I was in Griffin Park, you see families, families, families. And that's who we stand for, families, families, families. So I just want to thank you, and I also want to thank Record Parks, because I know they really enjoy this here, and our cultural affairs department. This is a great way to just let it happen and help the people do the art, do the music, do the dance. Congratulations, Mr. Sadio. What grade did you get at Roosevelt? I got a D. I did, I'm being honest. Did you match me, or you did better than me?
They did let me practice my stand-up a few weeks ago, though.
Oh, good, that's good. You're the best, Gil.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. And Mr. Labange, Mr. Sadio got an A in sports. He was a quarterback for Roosevelt, so, all city, right? But I just want to give my thank you to all the volunteers for continuing to discuss the legacy of Charles Loomis and what he meant for not only Northeast LA, but all of Los Angeles. This is a very important component of our history here in the city of LA. And your event, what you've been able to do with this, reminds us all of this history and the arts and theater and the multiculturalism that was mentioned. And this was really a person beyond his time. He really saw the future of Los Angeles, unlike many people at his time. And I also wanted to thank you for not only the great event and what you do for Charles Loomis, but your volunteer hours. This is incredible. I hear from my staff and working with all of you, getting calls from Elliot, this is just a labor of love. And we want to, the city of LA and all of us, thank you for the work you do here. So thank you for this event, 10 years running. We're going to be back here one day. Some of us, none of us will be here 50 years from now, where we hopefully celebrate 50 years of Loomis Festival. Congratulations.
Madam President, I want to present this to Elliot on the 10th year anniversary.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Mr. Clerk, next item, item 24.
Madam President, that was being held for Councilmember Englander. He is not here at the moment.
Okay, let's take up the item, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Item passed, this next item. Let's go to item 25 for Mr. Labange.
Planning Department here on that. So, Mr. Bernstein, if you could just tell us, what's the status? And I see Albert Torres, our great park ranger here, who knew Dante in his years. What's the process right now? We are going to approve this. We strongly believe in Dante Orgolini, an immigrant from Brazil, of Italian descent, who created a garden for you and me up in the western, eastern section of Mount Hollywood, in Griffin Park. What's the next steps?
Thank you, Councilmember Labange. Ken Bernstein with the Planning Department and Office of Historic Resources. This motion is approved today. That will refer the matter to the Cultural Heritage Commission. We're prepared to have the commission meet on this on June 18th.
Great.
And get it back to council forthwith before the end of June.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Ask for an eye vote. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Mr. Labange. We'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. That passes. All right, next item, please. Okay, we're going to go ahead and go with item four. John Walsh. Item four. Followed by Wayne. Please hold your applause. Are you going to, please don't yell out from the council chambers that's disrupting the meeting. Mr. Spindler, if you want to do that, well, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. Morning, Mr. Walsh.
Good morning, John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, Jay Walsh Confidential, @HollywoodDems tweeting, and for identification purposes only, chairman of the Free Michael Hunt Committee. Number four is the Harbor Commissioner. Now, we haven't found any reason to block you on the reappointment of Anthony Perazzi. As you know, I must confess that about three years ago, you brought another candidate up here, and I supported him. He's in prison now for kiddie porn. But as far as, you can look it up, or you can go to my website. As far as Mr. Anthony Perazzi is concerned, we support him because we have vetted his record. And unlike some of your appointees, he has no record of finding kiddie porn in his home. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay. Free Michael Hunt and Mr. Anthony Pepperoni to the Board of Harbor Commissioners. Well, you have to deal with boats at the harbor. The city owns a couple of boats. Remember those boats? Yeah, they have these big, large boats at the harbor, used for parties and drugs and all kinds of other things.
all kinds of other things, in my opinion. So, will Mr. Anthony Pepperoni, when he gets his commission, will he be sure to look into the matter of the La Mer? That's one of the boats. And see where it is? Because I can't find the boat that the city owns and spent five million dollars on. It's got to be there somewhere. So, again, good luck, Mr. Anthony Pepperoni. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are the speaker cards on item four. Councilmember Bonin.
President, I just wanted to rise and thank Mr. Perazzi for his service to the Harbor Commission over, excuse me, over the past couple of years. I know very well, representing a proprietary department in my district, how very important it is for the community to have an advocate and a representative on that commission. We're lucky down there that we have three. But you have been an incredible advocate for the neighborhoods around the port. And if Mr. Busciano were here, I know he'd be thanking you for your service. And I also want to thank your family. I see a large, a large number of your family members here with you today. I know, having a family member who's on a commission, how hard it can be on family, because it's really a full-time job. And so, I want to thank them and thank you for your service and recommend, and I vote on your reappointment.
Great, thank you very much. All right, having no other speaker cards and no members on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and take cards now on items eight, thirty-three, thirty-six, and thirty-eight. Cards on eight, thirty-three, thirty-six, and thirty-eight. Speakers will be reminded to stay on topic. Herman, on eight, thirty-three, and thirty-eight. You have cards on eight, thirty-three, and thirty-eight.
Do we have a quorum? Thirty-six, whoa, it's talking about Wezar and Joe Busciano, although Mr. Wezar is not in his seat, regarding approving a market value sale of a traffic signal cabinet of Little Tokyo Service. Finally, Mr. Rue, we're supporting the Asian-Americans in Little Tokyo. Hip, hip, hooray! Hip, hip, hooray! And to find that Little Tokyo Service Center is eligible to the purchase of a Department of Transportation cabinet removed from the sixth district. What does that have to do with us on this item?
No, stick to the items you filled cards out for.
Mr. Speaker, you said I'm on item thirty-six.
No, you didn't fill out a card for thirty-six. Eight, thirty-three, and thirty-eight. You're not on your items.
And I'm going to eight. Some people have Ex-Lax in their mouth. Number eight, number eight, number eight, number eight, number eight.
Okay, you're being repetitive, and it's, excuse me, you're being repetitive and it's disrupting the meeting. Stay on the subject.
Approval to record liens against the taxpayers. The vicious cycle of liens against your properties. And Robin Hood steps up to the game to remind you, is this constitutional to remove people from their homes and make them homeless because you put a lien against their properties?
This is an Office of Finance lien.
Yeah, you're, you're not, you're not on the subject.
Taxes!
Okay, you're going to forfeit your time if you're not on the subject.
Why didn't you have an audit at the time, Mr. Speaker? Office of Finance reports. And then, now, I'm going to item number thirty-three, somewhere back here, let me see. Thirty-three is going to be a long one. Communication from the City Administrative Office relative to proposed agreements will leverage information system incorporating for designs and purchase, installations, and maintenance of surveillance cameras. Surveillance cameras, you see, Mr. Wezar? We're talking about CD-11.
Not address any members of this council? Stick to the council rules again, Mr. Herman.
I am on surveillance cameras, like the one in my hand, surveillance. Authorize the President and the Secretary of the Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners to execute a proposed agreement to spy on the Venice Beach Boardwalk people, to remove them. With leverage and a broken system for the design and purchase of installation that we, the public, have provided for our benefit, surveillance camera to watch over the big dogs. Roof, 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 roof. Yeah, I'm talking about local government for maintenance and surveillance cameras and audio speakers. Check, 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 oh, it works. American Disability Act, it works. Again, speakers along with oceanfront walk for a term expiring for four years. Why does it have to expire? You want to see us on camera, right?
You'll address this body, not the public.
I'm addressing the surveillance camera in my hand, ladies and gentlemen, as you heard. But the problem with Venice Beach Boardwalk is, you're really not safe until they fix, adjust, and follow the policy of protection and our safety on the boardwalk. Not be racist and discriminate against us minorities that are fearful. But I'm only Robin Hood, and Robin Hood loves to share information regarding cameras and surveillance on the Venice Boardwalk. You forget how many arrests you did to Michael Hunt. Oh, I'm sorry, let me go back on subject. The front walk for term expiring four years to one-year renewal option, subject to the review, and the approval by the city attorney. What the hell does the city attorney have to do with this? It has to do with Charlie Chief Beck. Charlie Chief Beck, he can fire policemen, not the commission, when you're videoing in Venice Beach, California. Don't forget, Mr. Big Years, we were at Porter Ranch, and rue, 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 we love you, rue, rue.
Okay, now you're disrupting the meeting, and you're not on subject. Thank you, your time is up. Wayne, on items eight, thirty-three, and thirty-six.
Sig Heil. Well, thirty-three, the reason they're doing this in Venice are for the Michael Hunt Camera Act of 2015. They're going to design, purchase, install, and maintain surveillance cameras to watch Mike Hunt. That's why. They want to watch Mike Hunt. That's the reason they're doing this. And all the other Mike Hunts that are out there, the police department can't handle it. They cannot handle the homeless, they cannot handle the people who are on the boardwalk, artists trying to eke out a living, exercising their First Amendment rights. So, what they have to do is create the camera state. There's cameras everywhere. Like, for example, cameras got the former Speaker of the House of Representatives and got him indicted because of cameras everywhere. We love cameras everywhere. Cameras should be everywhere, in every councilman's office, too, as well as Venice. We should have cameras there and cameras on off-hours in case, for example, somebody brings a little guest.
Like, over there in fourteen.
To his office.
He is not talking about these.
So, now, to the matter.
You're not on the subject, stay on the subject.
Sig Heil, okay, Heil Hitler. Now, item eight, these protests must be sustained. Taxpayers, unpaid taxes, good. The more money you give these bastards, the more they waste. That's why it doesn't go to anything good. That's why they're protesting these liens. These liens are illegal, because the reason they're illegal is the people do not have representation in this government here. So, they know that. They try to work with the Office of Finance. They even pay the liens. But when the Office of Finance, and you can ask our controller Ron Galperin to audit the Office of Finance, ooh, you're going to find out that a lot of people the past twenty-five years have paid these liens, and they're not getting only a receipt. They are not getting a release of the lien. They have to receive a release of the lien from the municipal corporation of the City of Los Angeles, so they can record it and get it off of their properties. You don't give them a release of the lien. You're only giving them a receipt of payment. So, years later, when they sell their house, or their mother dies and they're in probate, they pay the lien again, because they don't have time to secure the release from decades ago, ten years ago. So, that's why every single taxpayer protesting these liens is right, and those must be sustained. And then, we get to the racist element of the agenda, item thirty-six. Little Tokyo. We got an Asian coming on the, on here on July the first. Michael Rue! And Michael Rue would like to know why Little Tokyo Service Center is getting this traffic signal cabinet. If you're going to give a traffic signal cabinet, why not give them the whole traffic signal? Why just the cabinet? Giving an empty cabinet is no good. At Christmas, you don't give a child an empty box without a little gift in it. So, give Little Tokyo Service Center this traffic signal cabinet and the whole signal, the whole package. Don't bifurcate. And most of all, Michael Rue is coming here.
Okay, Mr. Eric Previn, on items thirty-three, thirty-six, and thirty-eight.
Thank you, Commissioner Englander. It is Eric Previn, resident from Council District Two. Item thirty-three is, Mr. Bonin has been fixated a little bit on the oceanfront crime area in Venice, and it is, of course, a great concern. And this is a motion to come up with about $650,000 in this very hard environment where homelessness has risen by 12% to put up a surveillance operation, presumably to make sure that crimes are not being committed in the wee hours and at various times. It's a lot of money. You know, London is rigged completely with cameras. There are various approaches to this kind of a situation. I have very mixed feelings about this. I feel like it's kind of out of step with where folks in the public feel surveillance and observation of their behavior is going. So, I, you know, of course, we do, what about, for example, since there is so much money being spent in law enforcement overtime, as is, I think it was $73 million that Commissioner Krikorian pushed through recently, and just standard overtime for these guys. Maybe we could just do a few more patrols? I don't know. Wiring up the place with cameras is very upsetting for those who are, for example, doing legal things that maybe they just don't want done in full visibility. For example, there's a lot of council president activities that take place just out of view, and that's appropriate for the council president, and there are maybe members of the public who have a similar feeling. Item number thirty-six is a below-market value, and I appreciate this council acknowledging that it is below the market value. That is a step forward for this group. This group typically gives away surplus property of various kinds without referencing, and in fact withholding, appraisals of various city properties. And that is completely inappropriate, and we are getting to the bottom of the 4230 Cold Water Canyon matter, even as we speak, Dion, so that is not on this item, just to be clear. But I will be bringing those appraisals forward, and hopefully, we can get them linked appropriately so that other members of the public can also see them. And item number thirty-eight is really just a kind of a point of order, Mr. Englander, and I, you are, nobody would question your public safety commitment. This is an item in which $750,000 was arranged after a horrifying lawsuit that I won't get into any of the details about. Subsequent to that, something called minors compliant.
Excuse me for one second, hold this time, hold this time for one moment. I didn't want you to be disrupted. There's people walking in the aisle. It's already been warned. This is now the sixth time you'll stay out of the aisle. If you wish to stand, you can stay in the back of the meeting. But I think many are trying to pay attention as well to Mr. Previn's remarks, and it's being rude to walk right behind him. And so, you'll stay in the back of the meeting, and that'll be your last warning, sir. Apologize, Mr. Previn.
Yeah, I'll take the thirty seconds that you just used and address your comment.
We stopped your clock, isn't it?
No, no, and I'm going to just start a separate clock before we get back to my comments on the idea of asking people to sit down in a public meeting.
Okay, your clock is starting.
Yeah, I don't think it's appropriate to be...
We're going to follow the rules. Stick to the items, please.
I don't think it's appropriate to be telling people in the public to sit down.
You can share that in general public comment. Please stick to the items you filled your cards out, please.
Fine, I'll go back and try to explain what I was saying, which is, this is a law enforcement settlement of 750 grand, which is a substantial sum, just to be very, very clear. And in December of, I think, 2012 it happened, there was a, no, more recently, and you did a good job of confusing me, sir. But, but what happened was, they've now asked to reconsider this item so that that money can be redistributed to another group, including Pacific Life and Annuity, who are going to help presumably with the minors, looking after the minors piece. There are three different sets of lawyers and insurance companies involved in this, and I would just ask that someone from Mike Fuer's office, because Mike Fuer has dedicated himself to representing the underprivileged and such, to make sure that we are not poaching on the plaintiffs, in this case, take, because it really looks weird. And the thing that really caught my attention, sir, was it's signed by Mr. Krikorian, but Mr. Krikorian was obviously busy, though not busy debating me during the public, you know, hearings and various election stuff. But he was busy doing something, because you signed it for him. Now, I'm just not an expert on that kind of procedure, but can one city council member sign for another? I mean, traditionally, you'll see, for example, an executive assistant will sign for her boss. But, sir, you're not Mr. Krikorian's executive assistant. I don't understand. I mean, is he aware that you signed for him? That would be my comment on that one. And, you know, there were a couple of items that didn't make it into the hopper, item fifteen, for example, as Mr. O'Connell will refresh the memory, was an appointment to the Board of Library Commissioners of Ms. Last...
So, you don't have a card on fifteen. You're speaking on, again, thirty-three, thirty-six, and thirty-eight.
Can I speak, can I, may I speak on any of the numerous items that had to do with the Ethics Commission?
No, you got to, only on the ones you filled out cards for, sir.
Well, the Ethics Commission has done an outstanding job, as Mr., I guess, Coretts will remind us, they have done an outstanding job of being a complete failure. The question that I have been trying to raise about that was regarding the candidate for the Ethics Commission who appeared before this board last week, Ava, I mean, Anna Teresa Dehan, who, it never came out audibly.
Is not talking about any of the items.
Again, you're not on the subject, but that's your time. So, thank you so much. All right, the next cards we have are Mr. Walsh, item eight, and thirty-three.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or if it's blocked, JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Let's look at number thirty-three. This is not a contract for design, purchase, installation, and maintenance of surveillance cameras and audio speakers. Audio speakers, now they're listening to us, along the front walk in Venice, California. It is relative to a proposed agreement. Well, did you go out and bid it? I don't know. All I know, I'm told you didn't do it. You're giving the contract to a outside-of-California corporation called Leverage Information Systems, which is located in Woodinville, Washington, and is connected down here. How much is this contract going to be worth? We don't know. It's still proposed. All you're doing here is getting money illegally from other sources. Quimby fees, that's a surcharge to developers. That's $298,000. LAPD, $200,000 for the cameras. Maybe they should put some more, I understand now that they put cops out on East LA, walking the beat, that the crime is down. We need more cops walking the beat. And also, my favorite is Parks and Recs. They're supposed to be giving us fun. There's $129,208 from Parks and Recs. Total, just for preliminary to search us, is $630,000. I remember the old days when we had Ramona Ripston as head of the ACLU, not, there's a certain mafia that runs it now, she's out of it. We're talking about, I think she's in bad shape. But in fact, they were against surveillance cameras. Now, they have no opinion. The ACLU is spending... The ACLU is spending most of their time fighting for the rights for gay men to give blood. That's fine, but I don't think it's a constitutional right, okay? And ACLU should be under constitutional rights. So what we're saying here, and believe me, all the, Garcia has to flirt with the reporters, David Zanheiser, the story's not gonna appear. We do not want cameras and hidden microphones on Venice Boardwalk. And why? Why does Venice Boardwalk have cameras? To get rid of black people, to get rid of Hispanics, and up until Rue got elected, to get rid of Asians, so that only the, unless, of course, they come, they're tourists. Black tourists are allowed in here because their money is green. Hollywood, and number eight, fine. And I don't have to get up here and spend every single second. I've pointed it out, you are giving a contract to a group in Washington State to destroy our rights, and the ACLU just swoons over Eric Garcia and will do damn nothing. Take back your 50 seconds. You know, hold it four ways. You know what to do with it.
Antonia, on 33 and 36, please.
Good morning. 33, item 33. It says here that you are getting a leverage information system for the design, purchase, installation, and maintenance of surveillance cameras and audio speakers along the Ocean Front Walk in Venice, California. Now, most of the people who do all this maintenance, design, and installations are wetbacks and gangbangers, wetbacks and gangbangers. My question is, do they have the, do they have the right to rig, or can they rig these surveillance cameras? I've been told that they do. They can omit, and they know how to rig these cameras. That's my concern. Am I for cameras? Yeah. Venice is, as a matter of fact, I spent the night, last night, in Venice, in gang-infested Venice on Lincoln by Rose. I slept in front of the Broadway Elementary School. Yeah, they went through all my things. Where was surveillance? Surveillance, we're, again, as taxpayers, ladies and gentlemen, we pay for this costly equipment, but it doesn't benefit any of us, certainly not me, not on the buses, not on the streets, or anywhere. The gangbangers control the streets. Do they also control these gizmos and gadgets? No one protects us. Charlie Beck and the LAPD, and certainly not the Sheriff's Department. We get attacked and violated everywhere we go, especially if you're a victim of gangstalking, okay? No one protects you, no one. So what happens? You're at the mercy of everyone. So guess why? That's the segment of population that is homeless today because they've been denied equal protection under the law. Again, these cameras, who controls these cameras? Who runs these cameras? I don't mind cameras. I got nothing to hide. Man, I am, I'm for it. I want more cameras. God, put one in every toilet if you have to, but God forbid, please, get these gangbangers out of here. We've got a gang epidemic. And God knows, I've been everywhere, stayed everywhere, and again, we have a gang epidemic. Get rid of these wetbacks and gangbangers. I'm tired of chasing them. I'm tired of carrying a bloody camera everywhere and getting them stolen. I carry cameras everywhere I go, and I still have to go after every one of them, and I'm the one that gets threatened with jail, every single time. This is my camera surveillance. And I pay for these. I don't ask the city to pay for anything. I pay for all of my stuff. And who helps us? Nobody. Therefore, again, I believe that we're gonna stand up, we're gonna get a posse and go after these gangbangers and wetbacks. If you guys do not do something, the people will speak, and they will take you on, and they will find your underground bunkers, if you have any. Again, I know, and I live as hell every single day as a victim of gangstalking, so I suggest you put cameras on Masonic Lodges, Anti-Defamation League, CIA, FBI, ACLU, LAPD, Charlie Beck, NAACP, all the Black Panthers, all the Latinos, Maldef, Naleo, Lulac, and all the wetbacks and gangbangers. And that will cut down the crime for crying out loud. I'm sick and tired of doing your job, and I don't make a penny. Having said that, God bless America, and I love America. We need the military, ladies and gentlemen, so help me, God, we need the military. God bless the military. On item number 36, God bless Little Tokyo, and I love the Japanese people. You do also need a traffic signal cabinet set because you've got East LA, right above, going up on First Street all the way into East LA, the barrio, where all the wetbacks, they come down racing like torpedoes, all the way into Little Tokyo. And the Japanese people are peaceful, they're lovely people, they're wonderful people. They've hired a lot of these wetbacks and gangbangers who ultimately end up robbing them. And so you've got now your gringeliers and criminal gangs working in Little Tokyo. So, and I feel sorry for many of them, merchants, because they don't know what to do. They feel crushed between these wetbacks and gangbangers. They don't know what to do. Anyway, they are reckless. Thank you. God bless America.
Okay, thank you very much. We've got items, members, 8, 33, 36. Excuse me, please don't yell in council chambers. I'm trying to conduct the meeting. Items 8, 33, 36, and 38 are before us. 8, 33, 36, and 38 will go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Great, thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and take item six, called special for cards as well. Brad Hertz. Morning, Brad. How you doing?
Good, good morning.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Brad Hertz from the Sutton Law Firm on behalf of the AIDS Healthcare Foundation, just here to speak in favor of item six and to invite the 13 council members who've not yet appointed members to the new health commission to do so as soon as possible so it can start its important work. Thank you.
Hey, thank you best of Laura, too. Thank you very much. All right, and yes?
I want to ask the city clerk, or whomever, I'm not gonna appoint anybody because my time is short. So does anyone know any advice on that? I'd like to, where's the man from AIDS Healthcare Foundation? So if there's no urgency, I'm gonna have the new member, Mr. Ray, appoint someone to that.
The city attorney, I'm sorry, the city clerk mentioned that to me, and I don't think that will be a problem. We still would have a quorum, even if those outgoing members wait for the new members to appoint. It shouldn't be a problem.
But let me ask another question. If I do appoint Mr. President or Madam Clerk, if I do appoint, does that only exist? How did, if I appoint someone, if I wanted somebody, do they have to step down when the new administration comes in for the floor?
What you could do as well, as a suggestion, Mr. Laban, is you could consult, if you'd like, from that direction, from what you mentioned, consult with Mr. Rue, and-
No, I want to consult with the CLA.
In terms of picking somebody.
I want to know what I have to do. That's all right. I want to know what I have to do.
If I can speak to that, the ordinance does-
I want to have the CLA, or the CAO, or the CWB, or the ABC speak to it, so-
So what we can do, what we can do is, we'll have them meet with you and do that as well, and I believe-
Got it. Because if I need to appoint one, I want to appoint one tomorrow, but if not, I'll leave it for the next person. I just want to know, and if that, if I appoint someone, I want them to serve well. Thank you.
You got it. Thank you. And Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleague, Paul Krikorian, who helped shepherd this wonderful contribution from AIDS Healthcare through committee to help get to this day. It was dual-referred to budget and finance and arts parks. It was last May that the city clerk, actually, that's not correct. It wasn't 2013. Anyway, the council adopted the initiative ordinance last July 12th to create the Los Angeles Health Commission. The matter went through the committees, as I just mentioned. My staff worked very closely with CAO, city attorney, CLA's office, city clerk's office, to discuss the concerns, to help work out any of the rough edges in relation to getting this health commission off the ground. And I would like to also thank them for helping make this happen. And also, Council President Herb Wesson, and you, Mr. Englander, for introducing the motion to accept the contribution from AHF for $100,000 to be used for the benefit of the health commission to help get this off the ground. I also want to thank you, Mike Bonin, for appointing Bill Rosendahl as your commissioner. And as the gentleman from representing AHF just mentioned, we need those appointments to come in so we can get this commission off the ground, up and running. So please do submit your commission appointments to the city clerk's office as soon as possible so that we can get this commission up and running, and we can start working on synthesizing some of the concerns in relation to general health and well-being that affect the city of Los Angeles directly, and start making this happen. So, again, thank you. I ask for your aye-vote to accept this so we can actually create the health commission, and it's been a long time coming, so I ask your aye-vote. Aye-vote, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Farrell, and Mr. Hertz as well, and Mr. Laban. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll, colleagues, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Great, thank you very much. And we're gonna go ahead and take items five, seven, and 29 for cards. Next, five, seven, and 29. Wanna call on five and seven only? Oh, and before you start, fourth with on item 38. Without objection, that'll be the order, fourth with on 38. Thank you. Mr. O'Callaghan.
Before we start, I have a complaint. I was passing with my bicycle near Laban, and he told me to get the fuck out of here.
Is not talking about these items.
Well, I'm just telling you what he told me yesterday, but on item five, remember, Laban? Item five, relative to the removing various properties from rent escrow. Well, what in the hell is the city doing to the population in the first place? Putting liens upon them, and then taking the money, and then massaging it, and then taking those properties out of rent escrow, and, let's see, how many million dollars, millions of dollars do you obtain in this, in this manner? It's not clear why the city should be penalizing people just for having a place to live. So I really don't understand the whole goddamn stupid fucking system. Right, Laban? That's the same wording you and I like to use, right?
Don't address any members of the council. You'll address the council as a whole. Follow the rules, please.
Okay, well, you know, if I'm passing by the street and the guy tells me that. On item seven, motion relative to the funding for Los Angeles Coliseum. Who's gonna play there, the Romans and the Greeks? What in the hell are they gonna play? Utilize 600,000 of the city council's portion of the heritage month celebration. Hell, you get all these celebrations, all these events, and all you got is homeless people laying around all over the city. What the hell is wrong with this city, anyway? Well, I tell you what's wrong. There's people like Laban telling-
You're not on the subject.
Telling the people to get the fuck out of here.
You're not on the subject. That's your fourth warning. Thank you very much. Okay, your time is up. Thank you. All right, on items seven and 29, Brian Barajas. Seven and 29? Come on up, sir.
Well, I have a brief comment for events such as Fourth of July for item seven. As I see it here, it seems to be $60,000 for this activity at the Los Angeles Coliseum. My response to the way that culture celebrates its own history, pretty much I take opposition to something like, if this is directed for just fireworks, I know that Fourth of July should mean something to all Americans, and my only response to this is, I think we should take a look at the fact that it's not about shooting fireworks. You don't celebrate this country's history in this kind of context of just fireworks. You have to ingrain in the society why they exist. And one of the things that I would say about that is that the people who created this nation on that particular Independence Day, they died for all mankind can live away from oligarchy or the principle of a fascist system. And so I think that something for this occasion, you know, you could keep the fireworks, but let's say that if you replace something like that with an orchestra playing Beethoven's Ninth Symphony, which pretty much exemplifies why this country is so important, but also not just the people in this country, but all around the world. So Fourth of July should mean that creativity should actually predominate in the hearts and minds of all people, and let's not just shoot fireworks and eat hot dogs and just go home and do some ungodly things. But let's just remember that these people died, and that we should die for this country because it's worth it, because all of mankind should actually prosper. And since this country is the only country that can do that, I think that every single person celebrating Fourth of July should remember that the cause is to live for the future, and nothing else matters.
All right, thank you. Antonia, you still have one more minute. Did you still wish to speak on item 29? Okay, we'll go ahead and file your card then. Thank you very much. All right, so members, we've got five, seven, and 29 before us. Let's go ahead and open the vote on five, seven, and 29. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, I believe that takes us to general public comment. Augustine?
Morning, sir. Hello there. I've been on your blog before, which I totally disagree with you, Mr. Englander, on most of the issues that you espouse. However, I'm here to speak about the shame of this organization right here. You talk about everything except what's really going on in this city. This city is becoming the homeless capital of the world. A thing that's happening, just happened over here in Mr. Sedile's and Mr. O'Farrell's areas, their districts, especially Mr. Sedile. He claims that he has the jurisdiction over the Spring Street when, on last Tuesday, the police, LAPD, came in for the sheriffs and cleared out all of those poor people that are there. Also, too, it's because of their opening this new building that used to be called the Hall of Injustice by all of us people. And, Mr. O'Farrell, you should not be pushing so much on the question of-
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Wayne? Thank you, sir.
Shout out, last night, we met at Porter Ranch, and the person chairing the meeting today, the little guy with the large ears, decided that he couldn't answer the question that was posed. Why did he run for reelection for CD 12 when he knew he was gonna run for Mike Antonovich's Board of Supervisor seat? Why are we paying this guy $170,000 to run for a supervisor seat? That's all he's doing. He's just running around campaigning. Doesn't give a damn about his district. He doesn't have time. It's a full-time job running for supervisor District Five, it's the largest district by landmass in all of LA County. But anyway, the good news is, once you go north of Rinaldi, my little big-eared friend, you're gonna meet the real people of LA, and they're gonna kick your ass out of that primary.
Have a nice weekend. Eric Previn. Eric Previn.
It's Eric Previn, a city resident from District 2. I was very puzzled today by this. There was a confused agenda, a meeting was canceled, and, in fact, there was an item, a special meeting, that was called special at 10:15 a.m. that was utterly denied access to the public, and it was on the budget. So this would be sort of the second time in a row that, when I came down here to speak on the budget, I've been simply rejected. And so, you know, I submitted 36 pages of testimony to Officer Morris on the 21st of May, and I had asked that they be attached to the file, and Mr. O'Connell will see to it that that does happen appropriately. But can we attach it to this one, too? I mean, I just don't, I don't feel like canceling meetings after people have come down here sends a signal that we want folks to participate. Now, you know, maybe you do want folks to participate. I think you're, you're trying, but we can make some improvements together, and I would be more than happy to serve, sir, alongside you and others, on a commission to sort of arrange a public meeting that reflects the public's interests and some of the agendizing. There's a one very simple thing-
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Walsh.
You said you're gonna throw us out if we boo. You allow people to applaud, but you can't allow, at the same time, but you're not allowed to boo. Well, let me tell you one damn thing. The Murphys, who I'm descended from, fought in the goddamn Revolutionary War and were seriously injured for my right to get up here and call you an asshole. And this is the only damn country in the world-
Excuse me, sir, the utterance of loud, boisterous voice is disrupting this meeting, and that's not allowed even during general public comment.
My volume is-
If you're gonna yell, excuse me, hold this time.
My time is being-
Hold your time.
I'm too loud?
If you're gonna yell at this, if you're gonna yell at this audience, if you're gonna yell at the members of the public in this council, you'll be asked to leave.
You want me to talk in some silly voice?
Okay, start his clock.
I want, I'm telling you, what a, this man is running for Board of Supervisors. Vote anybody but Mitchell Anglander. Anybody but, and you pulled the rape kit off the agenda because you're way, way behind in the rape kit, and the women reporters don't give a fucking shit about those women, 'cause they don't think they're gonna get raped. And I'm telling you right now, the rule final vote, 9.6% victory per-
Thank you, sir, you're out of time. Have a nice weekend. Antonia, for general public comment.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have, we have a filthy, scummy, uncivilized wetbacks and Latino-Chango epidemic in America. They are savages and thieves. And believe me, these wetbacks have a secret agenda to destroy America. Hell, we need ICE and the military. Having said that, thank you to Ted Gunderson, ex-FBI agent Ted Gunderson, who exposes gang stalking, and he names a few who are perpetrators of these crimes. It's the Anti-Defamation League, the CIA, the FBI, the ACLU, LAPD, the Sheriff's Department, NAACP, the Black Panthers, all black caucuses, all Latino caucuses, Hermanidad Mexicana, Los Amigos, Maldif, Naleo, Lulac, and all Hispanic Caucus groups, Legal Aid, Public Law Center, the Freemasons and the Masonics, and several others are involved in gang stalkings against law-abiding American citizens. God bless America and the United States military.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice weekend. Wanna call?
Did you call me yet?
Please start his time. Juan, I called your name.
Well, she's calling me a wetback. She distracted me. She's a, what is she, some kind of a white bitch? Anyway, Antonia is her name. She's a wetback herself. Anyway, I don't give a holler about that. Mr. LeBonde told me to get the fuck out of here at a public street. What kind of respect is this? I'm running for mayor, and when I, if I win, I'm gonna tell city council to get the fuck out of here, okay? You're the first one, LeBonde. You're gonna get the fuck all the way to Germany, wherever the hell you came from. I don't know where the hell you're from. You're just a-
You should address the council as a whole.
Anyway, that's, you know, he's gonna get it back, but he, you know, he, he told me quietly so the, the, the media won't hear. Asshole.
Thank you very much. Have a nice weekend.
I did speak to the individual on Main Street, and I thought it was language that he could understand.
Brian. Excuse me, you're disrupting the meeting. That was the last warning, Wayne. I've warned you six times now for yelling out, disrupting this meeting. Have a nice weekend. Sergeant, can you please escort Mr. Wayne Spindler out? Thank you very much. Do not disrupt this meeting. Do not disrupt, you're still disrupting this meeting. I'm not asking you to speak back. Sergeants, please show him the door. Thank you very much.
That is illegal. You're up to police officers. You know that's illegal.
Goodbye. Thank you. Excuse me, you're still disrupting this meeting. If you want to continue to disrupt this meeting, you'll be suspended from the chambers. Not yet, sir. But Brian, if you want to hang out there for a second, I'll call you up next.
And for the record, he's still, Mr. Spindler's still yelling as he's-
Still yelling, he's not listening to the order. Thank you, sergeants, for escorting him out. Ma'am, can you please have a seat? You can have a seat, or please stand in the back of the chambers, ma'am. Excuse me. Mr. Herman, if you want to continue to yell out, you were warned six times as well. Thank you. Mr. Barajas.
Yeah, thank you. Well, first off, I think people should get the fact that we're entering in a moment of crisis. Everybody has heard of the Greek situation, that if they do not pay, I don't think people understand the calamity structure of the whole system itself, it could collapse. So what I ask everybody here to do is, there is a House Bill, HR 381, that's the Return to the Glass-Steagall Act. What we have to do if we do not want to have a financial crisis to the amount that could cause World War III, a nuclear world war, we have to get the fact that Wall Street is gone, it does not have any assets, and that we have to reorganize the debt. We have legitimate, but we also have illegitimate debt. Now, the Greek crisis is exemplary because we have not dealt with the too-big-to-fail situation. So if anybody here wants to pass HR 381, tell your congressperson.
And the final card, Henry, come on up. Henry is not in?
Speaker, right here.
This is not your card.
Mr. Speaker, I put in a public comment card. Are you denying me a public accommodation, sir?
No, go ahead. I don't have your card, but go ahead, Mr. Herman.
Mr. Speaker, when you say to us that because I get up to walk, half of you are not even in your seat when you're pushing a button to vote, what the F's wrong with you? This is public comment. If you can't handle the heat from Porter Ranch, get the hell out of office and go get a teacher's job and teach something that you can't even teach, bonehead. Yeah, speaking of you, big ears. I sit on my ass all day here just to get one minute, and that's bullshit. Accommodate people, you dumbass. Yeah, and again, neighborhood watch. Listen to this, folks. Basic car meeting, June 25th, homeless, a growing problem. Speaker Officer Darryl Williams of the LAPD. What is being done about homeless resources and shelters? What can be done? Sit on your ass and do shit, dumbass. Provide homeless-
Okay, you will not, excuse me, you're not gonna use loud, excuse me, you're not gonna yell, you're not gonna yell in these chambers. And that, that is a rule in, in the council rules as well, so I'd like to recognize those rules. Henry?
Yes. I'll always be beholden to Cutlass driver Nate Holden for assuring me that any money sheltered from my pay by the hacker board, the city council, or the union, as agreed by the union, would be vested and accounted for in the future. However, we know the successors of Mr. Holden got arrested for money laundering. And Mr. Weston, we know, the first word in Weston is "we," the last word is "zone," and SSN for the shelter sums, he been feeling the comfort for the past time he been in office. So, Mr. Weston, I'm sure Mr. Lacy will show you the more stakes in one minute on this. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. That concludes the general public portion comment of the agenda, and, colleagues, now I'd like to ask if you have any special announcements? Any announcements? Seeing none? Like everybody to please rise for adjourning motions? Ask everybody, including those folks, if I could, in council chambers and our visitors and guests, to please rise for adjourning motions. And out of respect, we rise for those we've lost. Looking on my right, starting with Mr. LeBonde, do we have any adjourning motions? Seeing none? To my left, Mr. Huizer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Rachel Estrada. She is a former president and CEO of the Pasadena Boys and Girls Club, and she passed away recently. She is a loving mother, wife, daughter, and sibling. She was born and raised in Bull Heights and learned the value of activism from her parents, who were active in the community, and served in the advisory club of the community service organization, as CSO, as we like to call it. It is an organization where leaders like Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta mobilize the Latino community against injustice. The CSO was located in the building now known as the Bull Heights City Hall, where my office is located as well. Her husband, Raoul Estrada, works at that building as well. He runs a nonprofit organization called El Centro de Ayuda. It's a great organization that provides much-needed social services and support to our young people in the area. Rachel began her career at the Boys and Girls Club of Pasadena in 2004 as Director of Program Development. In 2005, she was named Vice President of Business Affairs, a post she held until September 2010, when she was named President and CEO of the nonprofit. Rachel was very proud to be the first woman of color to serve as the club's President and CEO. Rachel's passion and dedication for the boys and girls of the club was unlike any other, and her leadership helped create a strong foundation for continued service towards the youth at the club. Her love of life, positive energy, bright smile, and warm spirit was contagious, illuminating. She also illuminated a room and transmitted unto others, including those closest to her. Rachel would have celebrated her 58th birthday tomorrow, Saturday. Rachel was happily married to her lifelong soulmate and husband of 38 years, Raoul Estrada. Our deepest condolences to Raoul, her daughters Marissa, Adriana, mother Olga Carlos, three sisters, three brothers, and family and friends. She will be greatly missed, and we join Raoul Estrada in, in celebrating her life and also thanking her for the contributions she made to assuring that some of our young people have opportunities. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you. I ask that we adjourn in the memory of David Grunwald. David was the eldest son of Fritz Martin Grunwald and Lottie Grunwald, and the big brother to Michael, who are all deceased. He was born on February 2nd, 1942, in Oxford, in the UK. His earliest memories of childhood was hearing tanks roll over the small streets in Oxford, creating what he liked to say is a lifelong dislike of the chalk-on-blackboard grading sounds. In 1947, the family relocated to the United States, arriving in Southern California by ship. David served in the Second Class of Peace Corps Volunteers, being inducted by Sergeant Shriver himself, and he taught Bible knowledge in Sierra Leone. Upon returning to the States in 1966, he was immediately called up into service in the US Army and spent some of his deployment in Germany. A motorcycle accident in an operation for a benign tumor resulted in him finishing his time at the Letterman Army Hospital, where he, he worked in press and public relations and began a career in press and public relations. He started writing for the San Francisco Foghorn. He described his Vietnam-era experience this way. He said, quote, "I never saw combat, but I saw service members who came home from combat, and that was enough." David spent some time working for the Washington Post in the early 70s before moving to New York and settling in as a freelance writer. He met the love of his life, Marilyn Grunwald, in London on January 22nd, 1981. February, they moved, she moved to New York, and March, they were married. The two of them are known to be very decisive people. Their only child, Maria Christine, was baptized by the Reverend Cyril Jenkins, and David took pride in saying that that is the same reverend who married Miss Piggy and Kermit in The Muppets, Take Manhattan movie. Very Hollywood. David continued to write and freelance, and for years, he was the copy editor of various Southland publications, The Daily Breeze and Torrance, The Hollywood Reporter, The Daily Journal. During his stint at The Daily Journal, he won a Los Angeles Press Club Award for the Best Headline in 2003, and it was reporting on the lawsuit against McDonald's that we all remember with the hot coffee. His headline was "Suit Hits McDonald's in the McMuffin." He was presented that award by actor Hector Alonso. David was a very civic-minded individual, a very avid member of DipCiv or the Democratic Party of the San Fernando Valley. He and his wife were fixtures, and she still is a fixture in DipCiv and other Democratic Party events. He's survived by his wife Marilyn of 33 years, the member who's, as I mentioned, a member of the Board of Taxi Cabinet Commissioners, his, his daughter Maria Christine, and three grandchildren. The service will be held on Monday, June 8th, 3:30 p.m. at Temple Akiba in Culver City. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Members, I have one adjourning motion sadly as well. Roger Cruz, he was born on December 27th, 1945, in Tampa, Florida. He was the eldest son of parents Cecil and Clara Cruz. Roger and his brother B. spent most of their childhood in Florida. However, his father's produce business kept the family moving from Florida to New York and to California. Among other places, following his father's death in 1960, the family settled in Fort Myers, Florida, where he graduated from Fort Myers Senior High School in 1963. While attending the Florida State University, Roger married his first wife Nancy, and their oldest son Christopher was born in 1968. After college, Roger moved back to Fort Myers and was very active in local theater, producing, directing dozens of plays during the 1970s. His second son, Colin, was born in 1974. Following his divorce in 1976, Roger moved to Los Angeles and briefly pursued an acting career before relocating to New York City, where he went on to be the production manager at Radio City Music Hall. He traveled the world with the Radio City Rocketeers. In 1980, he married actress and writer Louise Schaefer. He left Radio Music City Hall and began a long and successful career writing for daytime television. Roger Cruz sadly passed away on May 26th, following a long battle with cancer, at a young 69-years-old. He survived by his wife of 35 years, his brother B. Cruz, sister-in-law Iris Cruz, his half-sister Sandra, his sons Christopher and Colin, daughter-in-law Linda, and two step-grandchildrens, Elizabeth and Katerina. I adjourn in memory of Roger, not that I've met him, but I work with and have the privilege of having his son Colin on my staff and part of our team. I can only tell you that, knowing Colin, and if the apple doesn't fall far from the tree, Roger is full of life. Roger was very loved, not only by Colin, who we love dearly as one of our own family members, but by his entire family. I've heard great stories about him as well. And in thinking about our family member, Colin Cruz, and that he's lost now his father, my heart is broken for him and his family. They're in our prayers, we're thinking about the entire Cruz family, and may Roger finally rest in peace. Thank you. We are adjourned. One more? Oh, I'm sorry, let me just make a quick announcement. Economic development will be in chambers today at 4 o'clock. Thank you. 1 o'clock? 1 o'clock, 1 o'clock. 4 o'clock? You don't want to go to 4? 1 o'clock, 1 o'clock, in council chambers, economic- one o'clock, in council chambers, Economic Development. Thank you, Mr. Price. And this council meeting is now officially adjourned. Be safe. Thank you very much.